Okay, I got seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. For recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Counselor Stenit?
Here.
Counselor Savage?
Here.
Counselor Fleck?
Here.
Counselor Soulsby?
Here.
Counselor Irvin?
Here.
Mayor Gowing?
Here. There's no items to be added to the agenda and nobody signed up to speak and nobody's in here, so we'll move on. Item five, there's no public hearings brings us to item six, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to move the approval of the consent agenda with one slight modification. On the September 10th meeting, it says the council was in attendance, including myself, but then mentions Counselor Fleck absent, as I believe actually Counselor Roberts that missed that meeting. So it's my correction.
We got a second?
Second.
Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Okay, item seven, resolution ordinance, there is none, brings us to brings us to item eight, business from the city council. Item A is historic preservation commission appointments. Mr. Stewart?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. So this item is on its appointment of the historic preservation commissioners. So on September 13th, 2021, council adopted ordinance 3146, which created the preservation, the historic preservation commission. The ordinance goes into effect 30 days after adoption on October 13th, 2021. So with the adoption of the ordinance 3146, the historic landmarks commission will be dissolved and the new historic preservation commission will be created on October 13th. Staff is recommending council appoint the six historic landmarks commissioners to serve their respective remaining terms on the historic preservation commission. A list of the current commissioners and their appointment history is attached. We currently have a vacancy on the historic landmarks commission, which will then mean we will have a vacancy on the historic preservation commission. Staff will seek applicants for that position. So with that, is recommended by staff that the city council by motion appoint the following individuals to the historic preservation commission effective October 13th. That'd be Lloyd Williams with a term expiring December 31st, 22. Harrisu Hugart, term expiring December 31st of 21. Steve Kleiner, term expiring December 31st, 2022. Holly Turpin with a term expiring December 31st, 23. Deborah Monson, expiring 12, 31, 23. And finally Chester Turner with a term expiring December 31st of 23. Any questions?
Counselor Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, I moved that the city council appoint the individuals and terms listed on the memorandum to the historic preservation commission effective October 13th, 2021.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. Counselor Stenit?
Yeah, if I remember right, you said Friday that you hadn't heard back from everyone, just kind of checking in that they they would be interested in continuing in their positions. Have we confirmed everybody?
Yes, Counselor Stenit, all six of the current members have confirmed that they would love to serve on the historic preservation commission.
Thank you.
Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Counselor Stenit asked the question. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Item B is approval of Harrison Village Apartments Public Sanitary Sewer Main Line Replacement. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So during the process of constructing the High Valley Development, contractor Miley Construction discovered that it must replace an eight inch city sewer mainline running through the Harrison Village Apartments property in order to serve the new development. This line was constructed, actually, we believe in 1950 and is in poor condition. It currently serves 55 homes, the new Harrison School and the Warren Doherty Aquatic Center. The owner of the Harrison Village Apartments has offered to have Miley Construction replace the current eight inch sewer mainline with a 12 inch PVC line when connecting the new apartment buildings to the city sewer mainline. Miley Construction has estimated the cost to replace the eight inch sewer line with a 12 inch line at $140,453. Even considering the payment of prevailing wages, this amount reflects the cost savings on mobilization costs. Miley Construction is currently working on site to install utility infrastructure for Harrison Village Apartments projects. Installing the new line as soon as possible will keep the High Valley Development project on its timeline and ensure completion of the new line before the fall rains arrive. So it's staff's recommendation that the city council by motion approve the city reimbursement of the developer's cost to replace the city sanitary sewer mainline and authorize the city manager to issue reimbursement upon request and submit all needed documentation. Would explain that in the, under the cost, the reimbursement for the $140,000 would come from two of the city funds. The current eight inch line capacity would be paid for under the wastewater reserve fund and then the additional capacity that's created in replacing, moving it to a 12 inch line would be paid for by the system development funds. I'm open for questions.
Counselor Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council approve city reimbursement of developers' costs to replace the city sanitary sewer mainline and authorize the city manager to issue reimbursement upon request and submission of all needed documentation.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Okay, item C is the city manager annual performance evaluation form and evaluation date. Mr. Myers?
You have before you the evaluation form and it's time again for the annual evaluation of the city manager and so as doing that, in order to do it in executive session, we need to approve the form and then set a date for the executive session. And I think we are suggesting October 11th for that. And you may want to take into consideration the last agenda item, which is the work session date. So if we need to do the work session on the 11th, then we want to move this later into November or something. Getting busy.
Counselor Fleck?
Well, I guess I would, do we need by motion to approve the form, Richard?
Yes, please.
So I guess I will move that the city council use the existing evaluation form?
Second.
Have a motion with a second to use the form. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed. So date, do we want figure out the other one first or?
I would suggest that, that maybe we, you know, you take your mayoral privilege and move to the other item and then come back after.
Okay. Okay, so let's go to item nine, the item A is schedule work session for discussion on American Rescue Plan Act funds. Mr. Myers?
So we have received, the city of Cottage Grove has received $1,161,000, $562.89 or 8.89 cents in our first portion or first tranche, as they're calling it, of American Rescue Plan money. And we'd like to have an opportunity to have the council sit down in a work session and talk about what kind of priorities, what kind of criteria do you want to use in using these funds? They are kind of open, there are some restrictions and some limitations on how they can be used, but it's still pretty flexible and we could wipe out that million dollars pretty fast and not really have anything to show for it. So how do we want to do that? And that's what we want to set a work session for to kind of talk about some of those priorities. We do have some things that we do need to use for it. You know, we've definitely got some expenditures as a result of COVID that are not things that we would normally do, that would be nice to use this money for. We're doing some more permanent installation work there in the council chambers, those kind of things that are associated with the new way of things that are going on as a result of this pandemic that we'd like to use the money for. But there's still a significant amount of it left and we've got the other piece coming in later next year and we have until 24 to spend it, December 31st of 2024. So it's setting some priorities and knowing how we want to do that and what we should be looking for because we do want to use some of it probably to help recovery in Cottage Grove and tourism and some of the things that have been hit pretty drastically in the community. So how do we do that? We'll have some ideas. We've been visiting with the chamber and others, trying to get ideas and we do have some unsolicited volunteers to take some money, other organizations and stuff as well, that we can talk about as well. And so we need to set a work session date. The first annual report that we have to do, we are a non-entitlement unit. So basically what that means is we're one of the smaller cities, less than, I think it's 50,000 or maybe it's 250, there's only three or four in the state that got the money as an entitlement. Everyone else gets it as a non-entitlement, which means our money goes through the state and then comes to us. The entitlement ones get the money directly. They have to do quarterly reports, the non-entitlements units or governmental units do their reports annually. Our first report is due in October, on October 31st. So it would be nice to have the priorities kind of squared away and that we could do our report and say, yeah, here are the things that we do have that we are going to spend the money on, kind of lined out and we could report on that on the 31st. So the next council meeting is the 11th of October and if we're doing an executive session already there for evaluation, that doesn't give us much time for this. We did have the second council meeting in October, the 25th. The agenda is really pretty small and we could do it, but apparently we have a council member that's going to be gone, the mayor's going to be gone, I believe, and it'd really be nice to have everyone there for this. It was brought out and pointed out that could we do it on the 22nd of October, which would be the Friday before that 25th and do it as a work session then after the agenda session? That would work or we could do it on the 11th and move my evaluation into November.
And I will be in town on the 22nd, so I could do it on that day. It's just, I scheduled my vacation around council meetings and then work is sending me to Georgia for training the week before, so. Counselor Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor Gowing.
So Richard, is that enough time for staff and us to do that, to get it done, if we did it on the 22nd, to have it ready by the 31st?
Yes, because I don't believe our first report is going to be that extensive, so I think we can do the first report. We'll probably be working on it and have it mostly done. Hopefully it doesn't change much as a result of the work session, but if it did, we could make those slight changes and take care of that. So the 22nd would be great. The 11th would be a little bit challenging for us to have some information for you as you consider the priorities and everything, because we're still working on some, trying to gather some of the numbers and some of the stuff. We're not going to have specifics because we want to try to stay away from specific projects. We want to kind of get a general priority idea and then we'd be coming back if we had to with specific projects that would be such that would require the council
Counselor Stenit?
I liked the idea of the 22nd after the agenda session on Friday and it still sounds good, based on everything we now know, so. My two cents.
Is everybody good with the 22nd? We don't need a, we just set the date, we don't need to do anything, okay?
You don't need to do anything, you can just set that date and we'll set that for the 22nd then.
Okay.
So after the agenda session?
So then we go back to item C, 8C for setting the date for the city managers and that would be on the 11th? 6:00 PM?
Okay.
We're good?
Yep, we're good, thank you.
Concerns from council? Any concerns? Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This may come up in that discussion on the 22nd in terms of priorities, but just in response to the emails and the, they've been coming in on the sidewalks. Certainly the one on Taylor, but there's others in the, in the city that could use addressing, whether it be American Rescue Fund dollars or if that's even possible. I would like to see if there's support for getting a report back on what the options are, whether it be having the construction done and putting construction liens on the homes in those areas, whether it needs to start with an evaluation of the status of sidewalks in Cottage Grove. I don't know if we have any information on stored on incidents of injury or whether those get reported or not. And to be able to figure out areas of highest priority and focus, but some, something back with some options that we, as a council, can have to address the condition of the sidewalks. I think on Taylor, it would actually contribute to positively towards those, the two primary concerns that repeatedly get brought up. So that would be my concern.
Mr. Myers, you want to comment at all on that or?
I was, I've got it marked down to comment it from, comments from the manager, so if you, we want to go there. There's nothing else.
I just want to bring up, before we go down to the city manager's report, that I know the Coast Fork Watershed Council is going to be working with the city on Benny Hubble Park and I just wondering when we could get some things going there because, you know, we had that tree that was vandalized that had to get taken out. I seen EMS down there over the weekend, lots of activity going on there that's not good activity, so I just want to see something changed there. If there's nothing else, we will move on to report from city manager.
Yeah, and touch on Benny Hubble Park, we have three, Coast Fork Watershed Council looked at three options, three opportunities of doing things there. And they ranged from what, 15,000, I believe, Faye, to somewhere way north of 50 to almost 100,000 and a much longer process of involving ODF and the river and getting rights to be able to work there in the floodway and stuff. We're looking at doing some more planting, doing some other work there and trying to clean that up and so we're still working with them. They're trying to find funding, I think, for some of the project as well, to see if they can get some grant funding associated with that. So it is, moving forward, it's just going to be taking a little bit more time. So, anything else today?
I'd just add that we did receive the three proposals. We're going to proceed with the $15,000 proposal. It'll, there'll be some work taking place this fall into the winter months, about 2,500 and then next year they'll be working on replanting and maintaining the site. We're going to look at also adding some lighting there to make it easier for our police department to recognize that folks are down there. The other options were very expensive, time consuming, as the city manager said, in regards to getting permits from DSL and in the core and the various different entities we needed to get them from. And when the new floodplain maps get adopted sometime after the first of the year, that whole area is going to be in the floodway, so doing work, any type of construction work in there is going to be very, very difficult. In fact, some of the costs were projected to be close to half a million dollars for that one site.
Other items that I have, this next week is the International City Managers Association, City County Managers Association Conference. Jake will be going, traveling to the exotic location where the conference is being held in Portland, Oregon, so he'll be going there live. I'm going to be doing it digitally and participating in that conference, so that's exciting. That one's still happening, which was kind of surprising. All the other conferences around canceled and that one continued. The sidewalks on Taylor, you do have, the options the council has are, you know, basically pretty tight. I mean, if you could, more than likely, you're not going to be able to use art money. Art money does not allow, it doesn't have any allowance for streets or sidewalks. It's, we don't understand that. There are some efforts going on to try to get that changed, but it's probably, being optimistic, it might not happen. But they do allow for some water and sewer stuff, but roadwork is just not included in the eligible expenditures and sidewalks would be included in that. If we could say it was tourism related or something, maybe, but I don't think you'd get there on that. It'd be a stretch. The other approach is, yeah, you could use our money and do pedestrian footpaths or road fund money to rebuild the sidewalks. The challenge with that is you've got sidewalks all over town that aren't there or are in bad shape, that really are the responsibility of the property owner adjacent. And so in order to do, like Counselor Irvin said, and if we want to address this quickly, which wouldn't be terribly quick, but you've got a process to go through in the ordinance. We have to order it and give notice and say, hey, there was an accident, somebody fell, they got injured. And we're going to see that these sidewalks need to be fixed. They then have the ability to go out and they can get it done or we'll do it for them and put a lien on the property. And more than likely, that neighborhood, you're probably looking at us having to do it and put a lien on the property so that when the properties are sold, that lien would be paid off or they can pay it off gradually over time as well and pay that lien down too. That's probably the approach. It is one of the very few, if not the only, city street that has rolled curbs as well, which are not legal in Cottage Grove. Those were, and the sidewalks were probably built the same time, probably around the same time that the high school was originally built. And, but we don't have rolled curbs. Bryant Street even, I thought they had rolled curbs, but they have an asphalt curb that, they just piled asphalt along it and so that's even more substandard than the road, rolled curbs. So that would be another piece that if we did any work there, we would probably see some road expenditures as well on our side because the curb would be a city expense. And if we did do the curb, it might make sense to eliminate the planting strip. It's a pretty small planting strip there and widen the sidewalks. And then it's less maintenance too for the property owners because they wouldn't have that grass out in front of the sidewalk that they'd have to maintain. So that's basically, in a nutshell, what kind of approach you'd need to take. But I do want to caution you that, yeah, we've got that one email with the pictures of the person who fell. You're kind of on notice that if you want us to move forward, we'll bring it at a future meeting to, for you to start moving forward with the process to order the sidewalks repaired and move forward that direction. But yeah, and we're, we're even getting noticed now from people on Tyler that they're having concerns and we're also, today we got notice from somebody on 10th Street that they want their sidewalks fixed and handicapped accessible. So there's a considerable amount of work that needs to be done. We are currently undertaking our bicycle and pedestrian plan. One of the criteria or the conditions of that plan is we want to see some priorities. How to prioritize the handicapped accessibility ramps and which locations should we be doing first? Under ADA, there are some guidelines on that, that you need to be looking at those locations that are services that people would use. Laundromat, for example, is one that pops up regularly, that access to laundromats needs to be accessible. So our handicap ramps need to look at those kind of businesses, care centers, group homes, anything around them, post offices, those places that anyone that's disabled would need to access, we need to work on those in priority. So doing something that makes it accessible in a neighborhood for a resident may be important and it is, but it doesn't rise to the priority of some of the others and we have to be careful of how we look at those. And so that's one of the things that we're going to be asking for in the bicycle pedestrian plan is making sure we get some, some clear guidelines on priorities because we can't do them all at once. We just don't have the funding to do it all at once. And how can we, how can we start ticking these off in an organized way and hitting, hitting those places that are greater risk? You know, one of the things, I think, the Safe Routes to School project that we did, we looked at those things that were tied directly to getting to the schools. It did leave out that street or the sidewalks across the street from the new Harrison because you've got the access points that brings a majority of everybody into and to a crosswalk onto the sidewalks the school district replaced. So it didn't fall into the criteria on the others. We will be using our bicycle pedestrian plan to apply for more money from Safe Routes to Schools and this could possibly fit in onto some of that. But, you know, to be real blunt, we lucked out on that first round of the Safe Routes to Schools because they refunded the program and kicked it off and we had a project that we were already working on. We were just getting ready to start doing the orders and do the work and we'd already started it and we were able to get the application in and get the 2.7 or whatever million dollars that we got for that project. Future years of that Safe Routes to Schools funding, more cities are going to be ready. It's going to be more competitive. So the odds of us getting a grant are going to be a little tougher from that program. So I think we're going to have to be looking at doing it on our own, either doing it by ourselves, financing it and then putting the liens or having the property owners just do it themselves. Any other questions on the sidewalk issue? And if the person who's injured does file a claim with the city, we will be denying the claim. Our insurance company will not pay it and they will pass it on to them and encourage them to go and file it with the property owner that's adjacent because that's whose responsibility it is.
Counselor Irvin had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a, well, one would be great to know, you know, what the actual cost or a good estimate of what the cost would be for each homeowner and then wondering if there's a way to do a split kind of financing where there's, you know, a portion of the cost goes to the, to the homeowner and maybe there's a portion that the city could pick up if there's flexibility and arrangements like that. And then whether or not there's, you know, volume discount with any construction companies that we do business with, that we could get some serious breaks from if we do a certain number of streets. What do you, what do you need from us to get something on an agenda coming up?
Well, when, when we, when we go through the process, there is a preparation of the estimates and everything. So that's taken care of as a part of the process before anything happens. We do have that and we have numbers from projects and concrete work and how much it is per square foot and yard or whatever. You can, if you wanted to, split the cost. I mean, that's an opportunity to council, you can do that. I guess I would be really cautious on doing that because you've got some 30, 40 miles of sidewalks around town that need to be worked on. And if you start doing it for And if you start doing it for one, you're doing it for everyone. And if you've done it for them, what about the ones that, I mean, just did it? You've got somebody in that neighborhood right there who's already done their sidewalk, and they did a really great sidewalk, and they replaced theirs, and they did it at their own cost. You're going to be reimbursing them, you know, how, you're going to set a precedent, and then you're going to be doing it everywhere. So, that's a really big concern. And, yeah.
And I'd like to say, because I, at the back of my property, I did a sidewalk a few years ago with a driveway approach, and it was $6,600, so that gives you an idea, that's a 60-foot sidewalk with a driveway.
Yeah, I did, I think, 30 feet of mine, and it was about 22.
Counsel Stannett?
You mentioned it would be setting a precedent, which seems pretty obvious. Have we already done that, though? Have we forced the issue on other parts of town and made the property owners pay up and replace their sidewalk?
Well, that's what you have as the precedent already, because it's in your code. That's what your code says you do. We haven't paid for anybody else's sidewalk, other than when we got a Safe Routes to School grant. You know, and so that's, we went through a grant process and did that. For, yeah, there's some areas you could work on. I mean, for locations where there's no sidewalk, that's an indication that when the property was developed, they didn't spend the money to build the sidewalk to begin with. But if there's an existing sidewalk, do you help with replacing an existing, because they have done it before? But then you still get into the neighbor, he built his, and there was an existing sidewalk. So, yeah, the precedent is going to be if you do something other than what's in your code.
Any more questions on this topic?
And just for your information, under our code and under our SDCs, we do the corners. So, we do the handicap ramps. We generally do not make that something, even if the house is on the corner, we'll do the corner, the actual ramp and corner piece, they do the linear feet in front of their property. Just because we've adopted that policy as a result of subdivisions and other things that, how do you break out the corner? Everybody's using that, and it's out in that intersection, and so we count that. And typically, we use SDCs to try to fund some of those.
Counsel Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If, say we go about this, regardless of how we go about it, are we, do you foresee this in, coming up against like power poles and where we'd incur kind of maybe unexpected costs with having things undergrounded? Is this new construction, how, like, what are some things that we might not be thinking of if we just go ahead and say, we need you to replace these sidewalks?
I think on Taylor, after looking at some of the, driving up and down and looking at it, I don't think we have, and if we take care of the planting strip, we'll actually be widening the sidewalk. I wouldn't, I don't think we have any conflicts, even if we leave the poles and stuff where they're at. Typically, where we have conflicts with poles are on the intersections, on the corners, and the pole ends up being right in the middle of the handicap ramp. And so, that falls under what we typically handle and take care of there. But I don't see, you know, typically, we don't remove utilities underneath. I don't think we need any utility work on Taylor. Faye, do you? No?
I haven't looked at it, but I, nothing, I don't think, I don't think there's anything in the way.
Yeah. And I don't think there's anything that we really want to replace there, because I think we did it all when the school went in. I think we replaced all the utilities there as a part of the school project. So, I think they're pretty set that it'd just be concrete work. And if we push it out to the curb, then we'd do the curb too and do new drive approaches, yeah.
And that curb was what I was thinking of too, because I know one of the complaints, I haven't seen it in an email, but just talking to the people along that street, is because you have a rolled curb, it's very difficult to distinguish apparently where the driveways are, and so people's driveways get blocked there all the time. And so, I mean, that could have a real benefit just for the flow and for visibility on that street as well.
And for those people who don't, that didn't live there when the high school was actually still there, yeah, that was a big issue. It was, that would get, I mean, there'd be solid cars parked up and down that street. And that's why you'll notice a couple of the driveways are actually painted yellow, where the property owners painted their driveway rolled curb yellow so that people don't park in front of their driveway. But, yeah, that's a real problem. The other problem is people parking and using the rolled curb all the way across the front of their property and developing a driveway or a gravel driveway when you're really not supposed to do that, you're supposed to pave it in other parts of their yard as well. So, we'd have better control on those access points too. But the curb would be ours, so that would be something we would pay for. And you're right, when we do a big project like that and coordinate it, and we do it, we can get a discount because of the bulk, and we could do other concrete work at the same time and usually get better unit prices. But if that's something you want to move on, then we can, we'll start putting stuff together and come to the council with more information and the action on steps to take and move forward, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay. So, I don't. There is, item 10, there's no city attorney tonight, so item 11, no items removed from the consent agenda. Brings us to item 12, executive session held pursuant to ORS 192.6602E to deliberate with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transaction. So, as you were told on Friday, counselors log off and re-log back in on executive meeting, and we will see you in a few minutes. Everyone else log off. All right, got everybody back in. So, we will go to item 13, council action on real property transaction. Mr. Myers?
So, in executive session, we talked about purchasing a piece of property at 443 North Douglas. And after discussion, we are purchasing the piece of property for $275,000 for an acre and a half of land. We are still got some issues that need to be resolved with the title and moving through that process. But if all of those meet our requirements under the counter approvals, we're asking the council if we can go ahead and move forward with the purchase of the property. So, we'd like to have a motion authorizing the city manager to purchase the property for the city once all of the counter proposals are satisfied.
So moved.
Have a motion, we have a second? Second? Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. So, there, brings us to item 14, adjourn. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.